We're good to go.
Okay. All right. Now being six o'clock on Monday, June 5th, I will call the selectmen's meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. All right. So first thing on the agenda is discussion of our goals for the coming year. So first item is the town administrator. Do you have any updates?
Well, we have municipal resources coming in next week at six o'clock. And that'll give us two consulting firms, I think, unless you feel there's a need for a third. I couldn't find one that...I could find firms that did, you know, were basically like recruiting firms that just were there to discuss a person. But these two that we're looking at have the process piece of going around interviewing all the participants in town, at the townhouse, et cetera, and then coming up with kind of a template of what we're looking for, and then coming in with people, which I think makes a lot more sense.
Sounds good to me.
So they're coming in at six?
Six o'clock next week.
So that'll be on Monday's agenda?
Yes, it will be.
Perfect. All right. Public safety. Anything new with public safety?
Only to report that the public safety committee met maybe 11 days ago, 12 days ago. I wasn't able to go to it, but we'll listen to the tape and we'll attend their next meeting.
Okay. Excellent. All right. Financial management.
Well, we look at our crack team out here. We have the auditor's report, which I haven't really...I briefly glanced at the management letter. I think we ought to put that on the agenda and just talk it through in an upcoming meeting sometime. Okay?
Do you want to let me know what your availability is?
Let me know when you want to do it.
All right. Well, we're gonna meet every Monday, so whenever it's good for you. Okay. Okay. All right. Sounds perfect. All right. Technology. Any updates with technology?
We filed the grant for the $16,000, right? That went in pre?
Yes.
Okay. So that was supposed to be in by the ninth, and it's been filed.
With an email confirmation also.
Email confirmation. Great.
And we're waiting to hear back from Michael?
I did get an email from Michael saying that the server, the software, the data-based backup system were all still available. That was one of the things he was checking in. And he was just confirming prices, and then we'll move forward on that.
Were you gonna look to see if the grant for that...I can't remember the name of it. Deb Stewart. What is it?
Oh, the aerial flyover.
Yeah, the flyover. If the grant money can be used for that?
I'm sure it can be. I mean, it's our choice, as long as it's technology. I think Barbara, you and I just chatted about that, didn't we?
You mentioned it.
I mentioned it. Okay. But I think it's reasonable that we could use...
Is this a technology part, but I don't know if the whole thing would be...
I don't know why it wouldn't all be technology. It's updating maps.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know enough.
Who would...
I have no idea who...
Do we need to ask the Department of Revenue outside of the grant? I don't want to go back to the grant people, but would the auditors or the Department of Revenue be the people to tell us?
We could...the Department of Revenue, we could call the ref, our ref for the Department of Revenue, or send an email into Boston to Martin.
Okay.
Avery's torn. I don't know. But I have no idea what's involved in that among the money that was asked for from the assessors. Other than I...
Do you have a copy of the letter that showed the...I think there's about 10 towns that are each paying a piece of that. Did you ever see that letter?
So I'm not...
Okay.
I had a little discussion with...was asked if it could come from buildings and grounds and many other things.
Right. Right. All right. I'll share the letter with you, and then maybe we can talk about it before we ask the Department of Revenue. My headset is, I don't know why it wouldn't be, but, you know...
Probably be good before we make a commitment to know.
Absolutely.
I mean, even if it's just a portion of it. All right. Anything with grants? Got a nice email from...that Colleen has copied us in with her correspondence with this woman that does the course from Northeastern.
Yes. That's where we stand.
Okay.
Sort of waiting for any answer. We should probably chat. One of the...are you familiar with this? Have we...
No.
Colleen Thompson has a acquaintance, friend, that is a professor at Northeastern University, who teaches grant writing, how to go after them, you know. I watched one of her YouTube lectures, and she is the real thing. So the question is, was would she be interested in working with this? And the idea was that she has students that she assigns projects. So right now, she is already assigned, you know, they're coming to the end of their semester. But come the fall, it might be something that we could say, you know, we'd like to go forward with this. She also has the...she also will do grant writing. I'm not sure, writing as much as looking into it, finding out where to go, finding out how to go after them for $50 an hour, as I understand from the letter.
Really?
Yeah. And I think at least one session would be worth that for us to understand and maybe try it out. But I think the other second piece is, and Colleen was gonna go after this, was to see about using a student or students, because that would be inexpensive, if at all, and be good from both sides.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was impressed with the possibilities there. I was impressed with how modest her fees are, impressed how it fits with this town. Does bring up a...this may be a side subject, but I want to plant the seed, is we seem, when something like this comes up during the year, not to have a lot of discretionary dollars around. And I hope that we can remember next spring during the budget process that we should have an account for opportunities that come up during the year, just like this.
I agree.
But I hope we can take advantage of her. That just sounds too good, and I love the educational aspect.
Right.
Yeah. It'd be nice just to know where to even find...
Exactly.
What's out there.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we'll continue to work on this one, then.
Yes.
All right. Anything on volunteerism?
Not from my end, no. Something we're gonna have to go after, but we just have too many things on our plate right now.
Please volunteer!
Can we just go back to financial management and the DOR Advisory Committee? I know we had come up with that list of items that...and I think most of them have really been identified and addressed, that you and Colleen have really taken care of. I think all the financial items, haven't you, that were on the list?
Just about all of them.
Okay.
And if there are still one or two that are left, we're in the process of working those and changing them over. We've done a lot of work in the last two or three years.
Oh, absolutely. You certainly have. Yeah, I think everything that was left was really town administrator tied to that position or budgets and bylaws that...
I think one of the things I know from my department for the current...and I have it written out, is an actual policy or procedure on everything, you know, what we do. But it can be taken...a lot of it can be taken from ones that are already done and just meshed together. And that's probably one of the few things that's still on the list that hasn't been adjusted. But as far as the ins and outs of the things that they were talking about, is the segregation of duties and all that, which there's still probably a tiny bit in 16's management letter, it's been corrected before we hit into 18. It's all done now. All of that has been segregated and done in a different format, and they were very happy to see it when we did the one. We showed 17 along with 16.
Well, congratulations. That was a lot of work for both of you, and to handle all those tasks, it's definitely appreciated. So where do we stand with Collins Group and that grant? I mean, we're pretty much done with that, aren't we? They gave us the five-year forecasting tool.
They did, but unfortunately, the five-year forecast, when they presented it and they made their recommendations for 18, we buried it somewhat. So that has to be rechanged again. Now, I don't know if they want to do that, because they had some suggestions on there about owning differently, and we went with what we thought was best for the town.
Okay.
So those will have to go into their chats and then go forward from there. And I have just been waiting for kind of the end of the fiscal year, then I will change all the financial aspect of what was recommended and what we actually did. And that I did for 17 already, and I will do it going forward through 18 as we're doing the recap sheet.
Okay.
Those are the other things that affect us.
Now, do we have to send them a letter or explain how we're using these tools to wrap up this grant?
Well, we are...I had gone back before with Monica and whatnot when there were the changes to the capital, and I gave her everything we had.
Okay.
And as far as Mr. Kingsley with the financial aspect of it, is there are still a few pieces of it that I can't complete, like the cherry sheets and whatnot. We have proposed cherry sheets from the state, but until we get the actual, I can't fill those things in. So I need to just wait and do that, then I'll send him that, and he's aware of that.
Okay.
And I have gone back and forth if I had any problems with anything with that.
Okay. All right. Well, I can touch base with Monica, let her know that we're still tweaking the five-year plan, and just make sure that we do what we need to do to complete the grant.
Were they planning on coming in one more time?
I don't believe they are planning on coming in one more time. I think that we're done. I can ask...
The only thing that comes to mind is the policies and procedures piece of it. Okay, we've gone through with them. That's now...do the auditors have a copy of that?
I don't even think we have a final copy of that. I don't have a final copy.
Of the policies that we adopted?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we're in the process of doing it with them, but I never got a final piece of it.
So we need closure on that.
Last year, they were making changes, and they were going back and making all the changes we talked about.
Okay.
We didn't know the board, but we have a final copy.
Let me check with Monica and see where we are, and it could be that we do need one more meeting.
Yeah, and the second part of that is, then it goes to the auditors, because then they'll be using it when they do their audit checklist next year, since we made commitments as part of those policies.
Okay. All right. So I'll touch base with her and see where we are with that. Now, with both of us being on the DOR Advisory Committee, should we dissolve that? I mean...
I think after our next meeting, unless there's something comes out of it, we should probably end it.
Okay. Okay.
And it's just baked into our systems now.
All right. Perfect. Great. Thank you.
When do you think you'll do that, the DOR Advisory? Are you gonna try to meet with Monica again with Collins Group, and then...
I'll email Monica tomorrow and talk to her about these items that are still pending, and to see if we can get them in one more time, and make sure that we don't need to provide them with a letter, which I think we might have to provide them with some type of letter, how we're using these tools, and how they've improved our...the way that the town manages our finances. So I think we still need to do that, because I know Dale had to do it at one point for them to give us like the first part of the grant money. So I'll just check with her to make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row with that. Okay. All right. So we're waiting for John, and Jason was just here.
Should we just skip over?
Yeah, why don't we skip over? All right. So next, we've got discussion of needed updates to town's website pages.
Yeah. We need...
Nothing like stating the obvious.
We need all the boards and commissions to take ownership of their piece. I mean, it's embarrassing. You go there and things are either incorrectly posted, or they're not posted at all. So this includes membership of some boards. It includes things like, you know, what's going on? And you go and you look, and it hasn't been updated in over a year.
Some even longer.
So we...I think we need probably either from us or the town clerk, because Tara's been the one who's been great at moving it all forward, but she's not gonna do their work.
No, nor should she have to.
No.
Well, maybe we could even do a joint memo from Tara and from us, that the need for all of them to...and with a deadline, you know?
Yes.
Get it done by the state.
Right.
It is becoming a tool that people are using to navigate their way through town government, and we need to have accurate information on the website. Okay. Do you want to draft something, or you want me to draft something?
Why don't you do it with Tara, because it's gonna come from you two.
Okay.
We might even have the one that she had sent over. I think she sent one over for...
Okay.
Yeah, I think you're right.
That we can just update.
I don't know if it's supposed to be the chair.
Yeah, I wonder if maybe around...aim for July 1st with the resignations and renewals, new members coming out.
Makes sense.
That's the prime time for them to go in and update it, and hopefully, the entree to update all the other stuff as well.
That's a great idea. July 1st. Okay. All right. So...
I'm sorry, do you want to send the memo for July 1st, or do a follow-up on July 1st?
We want the deadline to have the updates done by July 1st.
July 1st, it'll all be out by...
Okay. Great. So do you want to work with Tara on that, and then...perfect. Well, she's already got something going. All right. So we've got annual appointments that will be expiring the end of this month. Have you started to reach out to people, Bree?
Yes. Tara is in the middle of something now, so she is...has that on her radar to be done and have everybody done. So when we have our meeting, the last meeting of June...
Yeah, it'd be nice to have this done by then.
We will have everything, so that'll be a big agenda.
Okay.
So we need...we must do it before July, otherwise these committees aren't gonna be fully manned.
Let me just look at the...this is not the calendar. So what is that last meeting? The 26th?
Yeah, the 26th would be our last meeting.
So it will be done. I spoke to her today.
Okay.
She came to my...
Awesome.
Do we want to even aim a week before, in case there are some issues that come up?
There probably will be.
I think she's waiting to have the whole list. If I can do it before, I will definitely let you know.
Okay.
I just...it seems every year, questions come up, and we're not sure about the term, and...
She has a whole spreadsheet done.
It's better now. It's much better now.
It's one of the things with the granting that she was sending over.
Yeah.
She talked about that and sending it to her. And a couple of them we've been doing. We did straighten out the council on aging today.
Okay. All right.
We're in there on that. She had said she needed some time today.
All right. Very good.
And we will have them.
All right. And then, kind of following that same, we've got the contracts that are expiring the end of the year as well. So we may...we need to make sure that we've got those squared away as well. Do you have that list? I'm sure you do, of the contracts that are expiring.
I have...
This was the list that Barbara did, Forrest?
She...someone sent it out.
Yeah, Barbara did.
Yeah. Oh, sure.
Yeah, I did a list of these four E contracts and whatnot. There may be one or two of those that I've updated, but most of them are done. Yeah, I have a book, everybody's contract in it. If you want to check them.
Okay.
Take the whole bucket.
So are we in pretty good shape?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought we were, too, that we had addressed a lot of them.
I'll double-check between letting you know if there's anybody else that needs...that I haven't checked, that needs to be...
Okay. Perfect.
Do you want to send me your list that...I didn't get that list that you... Rural School. Yeah, sure. Okay. And then I have the book. I can show you what I have in there.
Okay. We don't have Dale today, so we'll have to hold the CEC solar proposal and the rural school aid. He was gonna just check on the rural school aid. We weren't really sure exactly what that entailed, and if we're eligible for that or not. And then the CEC solar proposal, they were gonna be submitting us a proposal, but as far as I know, we still haven't received it. He was gonna send it our way as soon as he got it, so we can hold those. Anything else before we go into correspondence?
Yes. Legal. We had talked about potentially having another legal person to chat with in addition to complement Paige.
Oh, that's right. Right.
Yeah. I contacted Rich Bowen. We're gonna get together Wednesday morning for breakfast, just to talk it over before we have him come in here. Just make sure we're on the same page.
That's awesome.
Okay.
When is that?
Wednesday.
Terrific. Tell him we said hello.
I will. He was surprised that you were back. He said, "Haven't you had enough punishment?"
No way. No way. This is fun.
That happens with selectmen. They go away, they come back.
They come back. Right. We're a great community.
Like a bad penny.
Some of ours keep coming.
Exactly. Exactly.
He's answered, "I've been back for like years."
Selectmen, accountants, treasurers, reporters.
Yeah. Keep 'em coming. All right. You want to move on to correspondence?
Okay. So it starts with some appointments. Last week, we talked about the Memorial Day Commemoration Committee, and the chair of that committee, Bree, wanted to recommend Frannie Walsh and Kathy Ferguson. We thought the dates were incorrect, that the appointment was until May 18th, but in fact, it's till the 17th, so we have to redo that.
Okay.
And so I make a motion, we appoint those two individuals to the Memorial Day Committee until June of 2017.
I'll second that.
And the reason for that was they were on this year's committee.
Okay.
Where people backed out.
Okay.
So they stepped up.
And they'll probably be on next year's as well.
And so the appointments that you did for the 2018, we're going to keep.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Awesome.
They are ahead of date there.
So those two feet aside.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
This one is a letter from...did we do this last...this might be the same thing. The council on aging, did we change that one as well?
Yeah, that's something different.
That's something different?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. So here's a letter from Joy Marble, who is the director of COA, formally requesting our approval of new COA board member Mary Lou White to replace Barbara Knox. Mary Lou moved to Plumpton not long ago, is retired, and would like to get involved. We welcome her as a volunteer.
Wow. Volunteerism.
Beautiful. So I make a motion that Mary Lou White be appointed to the COA to replace Barbara Knox until June 30th of 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
All right. Very good.
They had some two people that lead. That's why they read it's for an unfulfilled term.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mary Lou White.
Let's see. Another one, then, also from Joy Marble, requesting us to appoint Dorothy Martell. Your approval that Dorothy Martell be appointed treasurer. Dottie recently moved to Plumpton, is formerly from Halifax, where she was heavily involved in Halifax Council on Aging, as well as its Friends Group. She is filling an important vacancy on our board, and we feel she would be an asset, says Joy Marble. So I make a motion that Dorothy Martell be appointed to the Council on Aging as treasurer to replace Barbara Alsop's unfulfilled term until June 30th of 19.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you. And Dorothy moves in Plumpton?
Yes, she recently moved.
Yeah, she moved to Plumpton. Very nice. Thank you, Dorothy.
This is a letter from Jake Jacobson, letting us know that he is resigning from the zoning and bylaws committee due to time conflicts. He thanks us for the opportunity to serve on that committee. And I think there's one more letter from him. Well, maybe it'll show up in the pile. I think he resigned also from the Buildings and Grounds Committee as well.
I've been doing that.
I'm not sure where that is. Let's see if it shows up in the pile along the way.
I'll check. Yes, it is.
Hold on.
Ta-da. All right. So another letter from Jake, saying that he's resigned from the Public Safety Committee due to time constraints, and again, thanks us for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you, Jake.
And yeah, thank you, Jake. Lot of service to this town over the years. Much appreciated.
In a lot of different capacities.
Yeah, absolutely. This is from the town of Plumpton. Board of Selectmen letting us know that they've reorganized the new chair in Pembroke is Willard Bulter. Another letter from the town of Halifax, that they have also reorganized the new chair is Thomas Millius, Vice Chair Kim Roy, and Clerk Troy Garen. So congratulations, Tom.
Yeah, congratulations.
All right. This is a letter to all department heads and chairs of boards from the treasurer. In order to prepare payroll for fiscal year 2018, we need the following information from your department, only for the...this is required only for the employees covered by wage and personnel. So I guess we have to fill this out for...
For Bree.
Bree. Maybe Bree can fill that out.
Okay. And then...okay.
They're offering help.
And that doesn't...it needs to be signed, too, then? You have a signature on the bottom?
No, I haven't, yes.
Okay.
Am I that now, too?
No.[1660.82]
So I can't do the base?
Yeah, yeah, that would be a conflict.
I'll see you Wednesday.
This is a letter from Joe Carroll, co-director, it's actually an email to me. Joe Carroll, co-director of the Brook Retreat. They are, have asked to speak about some sort of service project that the gentlemen at Brook Retreat Community could do for the Town of Plumpton. And they'd really like to help out, be it painting, cleaning brush, cleaning up in any way, and a nice gesture, I think. And I'm glad to talk to Joe and just explore it a little, and maybe each of us can be just thinking about an opportunity that might be a rise.
Absolutely.
I think that's a nice synergistic thing.
It is, yeah, very nice.
Good for the town and good for those guys. So we appreciate, appreciate that, Joe. Still have a few more minutes, so onward.
You ought to talk to them about the Townwide Cleanup Day too, for next year.
All right, two letters from David Waterfall, from KMP Law, essentially saying that the in the above referenced manners which relate to Dana Childs, please find enclosed a Nole Prosecu motion. And for those of you who, including me, that had to check that out, Nole Proseco is a Latin legal term. It's a formal notice of abandonment by the plaintiff of a suit or an action. So essentially, this is turning off the actions that we started with on both of us.
With?
With Dana Childs, Center Street, 163 and 157 Center Street.
So wait, I'm a little confused. Where do we go next with that?
I think
I believe now it's a private matter.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We have stopped further action in court.
And the tenant.
Okay.
So, this is the KMP bill for April, and it's kind of sizable, and didn't know if you guys wanted to look at it.
Yes, I'd love to look at it too.
Yeah.
How much is it?
Eleven thousand. Look at the painted looks out there.
I know, ouch.
I did take a look at the bill. It is all the stuff that's been going on. And I didn't sign the warrant in case you wanted to review it first, or...
Well, do other departments pitch in and pay for legal, or is it just us now? Okay. Okay.
So, I don't have a problem with you signing it. I just want to look at it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, if you went through it and everything is legit, then yeah, I definitely would sign it, but I would like to look at it too.
I was comfortable that, much of this stuff precedes my time on the board, but it is all, it didn't look like there were any missed billings in there. I think maybe, actually, I talked to Bree about this, about the possibility that we all have that to look at each month, because it tends to be the one bill we want to really stay on top of. It's the most sizable one. So, I'll go ahead and sign it, and that part will be taken care of, and the bill is here in correspondence.
Would you like that to be scanned to you every month when I get it?
How do you get it? You get a hard copy? You don't get an electronic? Yeah, I'd like, if you could scan it, that would be good.
Scan it and then send it to you?
That sounds good, Bree.
Do the part every month?
Yeah.
That was big, I think.
Okay, yeah, that's, when when the year is over, I'd love to see a breakdown of what each, what we paid for each, if we had lawsuits, you know, that year, or different activities. Just to kind of have an idea what things are costing us.
They are now breaking the bill up like that, so I could actually ask how much was solar?
Okay.
How much was Lake Street? What was Palmer Road?
Okay, perfect.
So they are doing them by project?
Terrific.
I think because we had the issues last year, and we wanted to know.
Okay.
And with the public records. I think they'll be following, changing things.
Great, thanks.
So just following up on that theme, this is a letter from KMP, which we get at the end of each year, offering two choices on how to deal with the May invoices. And choice number one is a bill for January 1st through 16th. For those services is sent in late June, and a second bill for the latter half of the month is, is sent by July 7th. The second way to do it is the full bill for June services sent on July 7th. Probably it's a good time to ask about this. Do we have a, I know each year we look at this and decide what to do.
It varies with the amount that's owed and what's available. And I can't tell you that off the top of my head right now.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear all that.
I said, "I'm sorry, I don't know what the balance in the account is."
She'll have to check.
I'll check it out, and I'll let you know.
So, shall we keep this in correspondence and look at it again next week? Okay. Couple more things, but shall we?
Yeah, why don't we jump to the 6:30 appointment with John Wilhelmsen and Jason Frazier, and we also have got Barbara Gomez and Colleen Moore in here to discuss the establishment of a school stabilization account.
Thank you much, Bree, for taking a few minutes to talk through.
Thank you.
This is an idea that Jason brought to start thinking about. And so it's more associated based on the particular subject, because he's done lots of work. But the basic premise on this is that we have the ability now under the rules to set up a stabilization account. It can be used to help offset significant special education expenses. And really, think of it more as, as an issue when we have a mid-year move-in into district that would significantly raise costs with respect to special ed. But it would be pretty much the same as account like other stabilization funds, though it's limited. It's limited to 2% of the operating budget. It's an actual amount that could be kept in that fund.
Absolutely, absolutely. So as John was saying, we all know that special ed and the process of special ed is one of the biggest question marks when it comes to making a budget for our public schools in Massachusetts. This is an acknowledgement by the state legislature of that problem that many towns have funding. Now, obviously, it's a team decision when a child is placed on an IEP, and they try and give the child what's called the least restrictive environment. They try and keep them as close to the normal school day as possible. But depending on what the child's needs are, sometimes the setting is something beyond what Denit itself can handle. And those opportunities present themselves to the families. They have, you know, some choices to look at. Some of those are public collaboratives. We're members of the Pilgrim Area Collaborative. I am Plumpton's representative on that board to look after the needs of our students, but also the fiscal responsibility of our town to support it. If we have a child who goes to the Pilgrim Area Collaborative, some of their programs range from about $40,000 a year to $60,000 a year per pupil. And that is a sharp discount to some of the private placements. If a child gets placed in an even more restrictive environment than a private placement, we're looking at $80,000 to $100,000 a year per pupil. And if they're a medically fragile child, that can actually go up to about $150,000 a year per pupil. So, this is an opportunity for us to put away close to about $70,000 in case we have a mid-year move-in for a child who's already on IEP, or if the team decision determines that this child needs a more restricted environment. Again, an IEP process is a team decision, and it's legally binding document that we're obligated as a school district, but also as a town to meet the financial and fiduciary responsibilities. Having the stabilization fund here in place would help us deal with that sudden demand for that many dollars mid-year in a budgetary situation. Now, this has two safeguards built into it, and this is why we're here to talk to you tonight. We want you to have some time to think about it as a board. We would need your consent, a majority vote, to approve for the establishment. The Denit School Committee would also have to vote for the establishment of this fund. Upon its establishment, it would have no funding source. It would need zero dollars. It would just be a fund that need established. There is two ways that money can be put into this. Money at year-end can possibly be rolled into this fund from the Denit budget itself and the operations budget. Or, we could have a vote at town meeting where the town authorizes some funding into this fund, up to the 2% of the operation budget of Denit. The dispersment of these funds is a double safeguard again. We, as a school committee, can vote for it, but we would also need the selectmen to vote a majority approval for the dispersments of funds. And this could only be used for special ed purposes. So that's why we come before you today.
So, how does that, how do we do it now? If we don't, if we don't do this, how does it work today, when you get a special needs?
Any special needs comes out with a special needs appropriation that we made at, at the annual town meeting.
Or if you have a mid-district, if you have a mid-year move-in, I mean, the special ed moves with the child to the town, the child's resident. So if you have someone move into the district, or if you have someone come onto special ed during the school year, which is more typical, it's not typically at the end of the year, they go, "Oh yeah, next year we're gonna do special ed." It typically evolves during the year, and the budget is set at, you know, one rate, and it goes up 50 grand. Then, we come to town meeting, usually in the special, looking for additional funds. And so, I mean, the bill's there.
Okay.
We have been very, very fortunate over the last few years that both that budget as well as the vocational budget have been budgeted very quickly, and we've had some good luck in that we've been on, and we've been able to return money to the town. That doesn't happen every year, though. We've had enough good years that you tend to forget about the bad years.
True.
Probably three or four years ago that we had one where we had to, money had to come back, and probably four years, I think, because it hasn't been lost. Right, and, and the bill's there at the end of the year, and we have to pay it.
So if we set up this fund and no monies were expended, does it roll over, or does it expire?
No. This stabilization fund does have the ability to roll over year to year.
And if no monies were expended and we wrapped the cap, it would just sit. And then any additional monies, and I think our, our hope is, is that we would be able to build this up and fund it through good years.
So are you recommending that you start to create this at the 2% level, or are you sort of undecided yet?
Well, I think it depends. I mean, if, if there was, if there was 2% there, then sure, but because our budget isn't huge in that respect, and again, once we come in, use that all up. If it's unbudgeted for that year. But it would be somewhat dependent upon what we have for excess funds event, at the end of the year.
So you're not looking to increase the school, Denit school budget by 2% to do this?
No, sir.
Okay, okay.
But I mean, I guess at this point, we don't, the goal would be to do it and be able to use some excess funds, which is still money that
Sure.
that's the town, because it would be money that would come back.
Right. So instead of coming back, it would go to the reserve?
Stay calm, and we're able to keep, you know, Denit being managed the way it has been managed for the last few years, that we would be able to build this up for a rainy, rainy year. Not at this point. No, no, we're not looking to do that.
Is there a maximum amount of dollars over time that it can get capped at?
Well, it's 2%.
Each year, right?
No, 2% of the operating budget.
Oh, okay.
I mean, that, that's actually, to some extent, that's actually sort of a drawback to this, is that they're pretty much limited at
Okay, I understand.
About 70,000, or you've got enough to manage. Budget doesn't go up that much, so if, you know, you can't really put a nice chunk of money there to deal with everything. This would really be something to soften the blow, and to try and help us manage year to year as, as things fluctuate. Because it is probably of any part of our budget, that's the one that has, that's the only part of the budget that has that significant fluctuation potential.
So once you hit the 2%, we wouldn't be putting money in?
Couldn't put it.
Okay.
So, is there a downside?
I understand what they're saying to establish it, but in reading this, it says in order to establish the fund, the law requires a majority vote by both the school committee and the local legislative party, which I believe is town meeting.
I believe that's true.
And it's not the board's selectmen. So we can't
It'd be town meeting that would?
You can't do it at the town meeting.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, well, I think an open question would be, is this something that can, is it even possible to vote this out as special? Because otherwise, what ends up happening, or, or if you voted an annual, does that go, is that that effective? And then can you put money in that year? Otherwise, we will be...
No, you can't, because it doesn't take effect until July 1st.
You see why I'm asking?
Yeah, I do.
I see why you're asking. And it, it doesn't, it does not say in anything I'm looking here that it has to be only at the annual town meeting. Nor does any of the information that I have seen through the mass, the mass modernization act change that. However, both the other municipal modernization acts states very clearly that a stabilization fund of any kind must be voted at a town meeting. And then it's funded by a simple majority, but in order to appropriate funds from that account, you need a two-thirds vote. It's not necessarily, this is something I had not seen, so I will have to see if they can use direct expenditure, or if it has to, the money could be put in, but then they would have to vote it out before they could pay it into the course of the year.
This says a majority vote could, is that what you're saying? No. Once it's in there, it says funds in the reserve can only be expended or transferred out after a majority vote of both the school committee and selectmen.
Yeah, or city council.
So, I mean, it makes sense.
This is something really no one, this has never been around.
We just need to tighten down, make sure we understand what we're getting into.
And, and the reason we're coming at this point is so that we have time to
Sure.
through. We're also gonna reach out to ThinkCom, make sure that they understand, of course, it'd be something to be looking to do, and we'll talk more about later in the year. But we figured it could sort of on the radar screen earlier on in the year.
Kind of a off-the-mock question, but are there any grants that might be able to be used to fund the stabilization fund? I don't expect any, but I mean, I wonder if that's even something that's possible.
Most of the grants that would fill in the gap for special ed are federal grants. And those federal grants, as many people know, are under constant threat.
Sure.
Ever more so now than in previous years. So I can't give you a firm answer. The school district will even have access to grants from the next budget at the, at the national level.
Okay, okay. This is only for the Denit that you're talking right now, right?
It is for, well, it's, it's for the Denit, but special ed is, is paid out through the Denit budget.
Right, but is Silver Lake Regional also looking at this?
But special ed is paid out based on the local community. So, Silver Lake doesn't have a special, do they have a special ed budget, or how does that work?
So I'm putting on my other hat right now as a member of the Silver Lake School Committee. We also do have monies for special ed funding, but that's only for in-district and house special ed programming, where students are still mainstreamed in regular ed classrooms, but they get special ed services. So again, I was talking about that least restrictive environment model. These are where students with some help and some special ed treatment right in their own middle school or high school setting can stay in the regular ed classrooms. That's paid from Silver Lake Regional Schools budgets. This fund right here, we cover the Denit Elementary, but also any citizen of Plumpton who gets placed out of district, even if they're in the middle school or the high school, because that comes back to the Denit budget every single year in the year.
Okay, so that would have to be covered.
I think until they're 18 years old, they're 22.
It used to be 18 years ago, and I think
If they're residing in Plumpton.
So, you're actually, that, that, that budget is much more than K through 6.
Okay, thank you.
And so this, this is sort of the right place to
John, in general, how much have, has the Denit returned to the general fund in the last couple of years? What percent?
I think last year, we returned, and this is both special ed and vote, 60,000 or so.
Okay.
I don't know if that's on right?
Between 50 and 60, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're on track for a number similar to that this year, maybe a little bit less. If I remember our budgets from, from that. But, you know,
I know.
It's, that's, that's been good.
Right.
As I said, we've had, we've had four years of good numbers, and it just, you know...
We'd love to take credit for our good management as a, as a school committee, but we, we do realize that the stars have lined up appropriately for us to bring budgets far, far below 3% and in some cases below 2% in the three years that John and I have been on the committee.
And, I mean, we do have, you know, one thing to note is that with changes in staffing that we had at the administration level, you know, we were able to bring in a permanent special ed director who has already done a number of really good things in being able to look at our in-district programs and also work with out-of-district programs in order to find sort of the best solutions for the kids. And that also happened to be more cost-effective for us. You know, we have to do what's right for the kids first, but that doesn't mean we have to do it the most expensive way.
Right.
And so she has already made changes to the programs, number of the programs, which is, we're starting to see some benefits from that. But none of that great planning and great, you know, intent is fully controlled.
Right.
So, you know, we're just, I think it's sort of, this is a nice, you know, John, I think your point is, why wouldn't we do something like this? I think that's, that's the point. It will, it will, as long as we have the ability to get the money in there, it will help us at some point, probably in a year when everything is going wrong. So, you know, that's, that's sort of the benefit.
The best, the best hope would be, it would get it established as special, at the special town meeting, whatever. And then, the ability to fund it at that point from someplace that's already been voted, so it won't affect the taxpayers at all. And if they, they have the knowledge of this, maybe extra money again in vote ed, I, I have no idea what the population is for next year and whatnot, are in special ed or whatnot, but we could transfer some of that into the account at the special, like we did with moving money around and paying, doing OPEP and whatnot this year. And maybe there would be the other source, my recommendation. And maybe there would be, the other source, my recommendation would be to use a little more free cash. It would have already been certified, because the books will be closed as of June 30th of '17, and we can't use what we've normally been using in the budget process per Collins anyway in getting away. And that might be a spot that we could use a little, some of that and some from the budget process. And therefore, that would have basically no effect on the tax rate per se, but it would protect those children that needed it as we went forward in the future. And then look at it in that manner, in the special, each year before the annual closes, so we aren't getting ourselves behind in a year. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Yep.
So the special we're talking about is
May.
Is the May special?
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
That's all we have on
We're not trying to, if a special came up between now and May, we're not trying to do it here, there, right?
I, not, not at this point.
They could establish the account there and then fund it at May, one, one we have a better
Better idea of.
We wouldn't be, we wouldn't be ready to know and be comfortable to know if there were any excesses in the budget
Okay.
later in the year. Because even when you see it, you never know that there might not be something else, like you might need to deal with some
Well, I
It would also depend, John, on, on the spirit of why we were having a special.
Right.
Right.
This is a very, I think John and I both feel that, we feel a moral obligation here for these children, but also for, for the taxpayers of the community. And I would want it to be at a special where that could be felt as we bring this fund to the forefront.
That's always been my headset, is to do it at the May meeting. When you got the biggest crowd.
Absolutely.
So that it's clear, yeah.
I mean, if you did it in October, we don't know in October what we've got for access to the budget.
Yeah.
But we
This sounds like a step forward, I mean.
Not funded.
Exactly. Yep, I agree.
Well, I like the way that you've explained it, Barbara, about how we would fund it and, you know, a plan.
Yeah, because this is, you know, not something what I, what I expected, to be honest, having just read the minutes of the meeting. I, I didn't realize it was going to be a special and that this section had been added to the modernization act either.
Okay.
I was just looking at the general one, so
Sounds good.
I can have this on top of it, and we could also finally add it to the best
Okay.
And I think this is a great example of how we're all working together on us. We can come up with creative solutions to sort of, again, keep moving forward. The planning, that, all the planning that we've done to just try and help as we go through, because good years are great, are good years, and others aren't. Because any place you have a help, that's good.
Well, it sounds like a, a good plan and
Sounds like the thing to do, so we'll look into it a little more.
Yep, and what we're planning to do is we'll, we'll reach out to FinCom, and then they don't meet much during the summer.
Right.
Catch up with them when they're back.
Yeah.
And make sure that we, that they're input on that, and then we'll step in, come back and sort of, well, ahead of, how many time to just make sure we're all on the same page and we have proper marching orders of what, what we need to do for, for the appropriate town meeting.
Yeah, and we'll probably need Barbara's assistance to write the article to create the revolving, or the, the stabilization account, so
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Great.
And if this, and I will offer this on camera, if the school committee wants me to go and discuss the funding part of it with them and help them with that, I will collaborate technically.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara, very much.
That's great.
Thank you very much, very much.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for coming.
And can I steal you for one, another thing while we're here? We, one thing, I mean, Dale isn't here, so I'll follow up with him. We're in the process of working with a consultant to move along the water treatment piece, and I think we're actually going to use the consultant to, the one we've had hired previously to, we're going to have to talk about it in our next meeting, to be able to help make sure that we get a bid package together that includes everything.
Right.
Because this is, the more we sort of dug into it, we found it to be very technical. More technical, the more consistent we do. And as a result, it seemed to make sense to have professional help, make sure we get the right bid package together so that we can get this out to bid, get someone in here and get something chosen. And so, so that's one thing, I mean, we need, we need general conditions and our supplemental conditions, which I think are standard items that we put together with bid packages that the contract uses. So I'll follow up with Dale on that, and I think maybe I'll just see you on that email. And then the other question I had is that the prior, this would be an amendment to the existing contract that we have with the consultant. And that was signed by the district. And I guess, one, are we fine with the district signing the amendment, since they did the first? And again, the second question is probably more for, to think about, and we can talk about it again later, is are we comfortable as far as, you know, we have certain maintenance that's done to this Dennecks school, which is the town's building, not the district's, that is within the budget? And we, we don't get involved in that, meaning you guys and even the school committee for that respect, other than signing warrants for paying for the HVAC service and things like that. But when we have projects that are outside of the general budget, is that something that we think should be running through Board of Selectmen and or Town Administrator at the point that we have one, rather than the district? I think the answer is the town, not the district.
Yes.
But this one, we were sort of down that path. I don't know whether we need to change direction, but that's sort of the thing.
I think town's the best way to go, but we can certainly revisit this after
Certainly, once we have a town administrator, it makes perfect sense.
But it all has to be in the town's
The town's name.
Right, you know, but, but the state statute, all contracts paying anything out of our budget has to be in my office.
Okay.
Is this just the mechanics of how we pay out, or is it more than that?
Well, we're going to need to, assuming that the school committee agrees with the amended services in this contract, you know, we need to get this signed and moved forward so that we can get the bid out and get a contractor in to install the system. What happens with the water systems, as I'm learning more than I've ever wanted to know about this over the last week and a half, two weeks, is that literally every item that they are installing in the system, from the valves to the type of pipe to everything, has to be signed off by the engineer. So, and they have to make sure that each item that's going into it, because it's a pump-up water system and because it's a system at school, all has to be signed off all the way along. So while you might typically hire a consultant to do a plan for something, and then you go and you give it to the contract, the contractor goes off and does it. It's not like this year. And you need highly technical expertise to be able to go through that process. So even the installation process is going to, takes more time than you would expect for, you know, someone coming and putting a water treatment system in your house. You know, they're there for half the day and they leave, and the water's flowing on the ground. It's great. But here, it's, it's much more complicated, and there's all the oversight with DEP and everything. So this is technical, not just from design, but all the way through the bidding and the construction phase of it, to the point that we get a functioning system that DEP likes, they sign off and they give us one. So it's, yeah, and it's still mostly agreed to me.
So Barbara, do we need to sign this contract too? The amend, amendment?
It's town money, so I would say, I would say yes.
Okay.
I would say yes. In the bids and all, all that stuff, copies of that are the originals, actually. It's supposed to be in the office, but even copies are supposed to be in the town offices, not just the region.
Okay.
Do we need a clerk of the works from the town side, or?
The, the consultant would be the onsite supervisor for the whole project.
Okay, so we're fine with that piece then.
They would, they would be, they would serve as, they'd be part-time, they'd be checking in on the installation as it goes, as part of this event amendment.
Okay. I don't mind signing, but I'm not sure I'd know what I was signing. I mean, you know, if the consultant says yes, then we sign, is that?
Why don't we do it this way? We're going to, we're going to have our school committee meeting on Monday. This is going to be one of the agenda items for that meeting. We are going to vote the recommendation
Okay.
for this. I'll plan to stop in in the evening after our meeting concludes. You're having a meeting next weekend?
Yes.
And can somebody put that on the agenda?
You got it.
Not be able to give you an exact timing, but it would be
Good.
sometime in there, and then we can, make sure we have it timed properly. Barbara, I can get you, get you a copy of this, whilst the original contract is going to be had back.
Great.
Because that's the first thing we all have, it's a, it's a, we're going to be in control when they
Yep, yep, I have that, I have a copy of that already. So we'll, I'll bring that along, and that way we make sure that we have everything how we want.
Perfect.
Okay.
Excellent.
Great.
Thank you, thank you. So we'll see you next week. Thank you all for coming in to meet with us.
Yeah.
This is
Thank you.
A lot of good information.
You don't have to go.
No, but they want to.
Can I ask, what, so with the school committee, with the, for the year's original request to the, for the special educational, is, when are you going to do this again in your next, is there another follow-up with this?
Probably not until the spring.
Till the spring?
Or if there was the need for a special town meeting, but really, it's, the spring sounds like the best time to even create the account.
Just to, I, that would be article
You know, if you have, I would start a new file for the warrant for 2018 and put that in there, so that we don't lose track of it.
You mean 2019?
2019, yes.
I'm just getting the hang of this, don't scream.
FY19, perfect.
We should put a tick, just to touch base with Barbara at some point.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
I'm sure, um
I can have a, I can start a thing for warrants for fiscal year 2000, as they come up, I could just put them in.
Well, there's going to be ones that are on the warrant this year, that'll probably be on again next year. You can take a look at that.
All right.
I mean, there are certain things we have every year.
Does Dale have that list?
Dale should have that list.
Yeah, I, I think
That's what you're going to meet with him about, though, isn't it?
Right, part of, that's part of it.
Yeah.
I'll just
I think this should go in the parking lot, too.
Yeah, that's, that may be
Okay.
the logical place, and then that moves to whatever other file
That we don't forget.
Yeah.
Okay. So parking lot. Perfect, okay. All right, so we are, did we finish the correspondence?
A little more correspondence.
Okay.
This actually is a, a letter that came in an email from you.
Oh, yeah.
It's your letter
Right.
to the Southeast Regional Manager, the Massachusetts Office of Business Development. I had a chance to look at it, seems fine to me.
Any changes?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
I have an original, if you guys want to sign it, and then Bree can
Very good.
either scan it in and mail it, or
Yep.
There we go. Perfect.
Do you want to, do you have to vote on that?
We had already agreed that we were going to do this. It was just
Yeah, we agreed last week that we were The Bylaw Committee with Jake resigning?
Yes.
I think we should follow up with Colleen Thompson.
Good choice.
Is, oh, you mean to replace?
Yeah.
Jake, okay. Yeah, excellent choice.
The Board of Selectmen warrants, post office, 225, country press for the annual report, 1,100, blue tarp supplies, $31, Columbia gas, 400, Lynch, Malloy, and Marini, the auditors, 10,000, Eversource, $66, and KMP Law, $1,250, for a total of $23,610.
So that's ours, huh? I always thought that was a warrant article that paid the auditors. Isn't that a warrant article?
It's set up in a warrant article.
It is a warrant article.
Yeah. But that's just reading off what, you still got to
So that maybe wasn't our warrant, we just signed it?
It was in our pile, and I signed it.
Okay.
She comes, I do them and then Bob, they'll do the
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Comes under the accountant, which comes under us.
Right, okay.
Plimpton Express, this is the one from a couple of weeks ago. Christine Joy named Plimpton Selectmen, the town election results. I think those were the high points in this one. Couple of nice articles in last week, the, a lot of Memorial Day photographs and a nice description. There was a really nice article on more photos of the Memorial Day, the Silver Lake Senior Prom. The centerfold was Dennecks Elementary School's first fine art show and concert, a bunch of color pictures, very beautiful.
Beautiful.
Very beautiful. Actually, wonderful text, too, about the kinds of themes that the youngsters were assigned and what they came up with. And then one more nice article on two newcomers to town who are being volunteers in town, Aaron Williams and Catherine Shepherd, who are both in the financial industry and have both become Plimpton farmers along the way, and a cute picture of them with their chickens.
Where are they located?
Well, Catherine's on Cross Street.
Okay.
And, and has just joined the finance committee, and I forget where Aaron is.
Aaron's on Main Street in the old Les Packer House.
Okay.
And with great jubilation, I report that that completes her correspondence.
Very nice. Now, who wants to speak with Colleen about, see if she's interested to be on the Bylaw Review Committee?
I'll, I'll do it.
Okay.
Unless you want to do it, Mike.
I'm, I'm glad to do it. I leave the decision to you. Glad to do it?
She mentioned it to me before she got off being a selectman, so
Okay, terrific.
Yeah.
She mentioned it before she was done, so, perfect.
She's going to speak.
John's going to talk to her. Okay, so we have got some minutes. So the 5:8 minutes are just going to be me, because it was just Colleen and, and I who met. So I just made a couple of changes. Bree, I highlighted a manialo. It's under updates and discussions. This was about the, the lead. It says, "The testing was performed in August and the school was closed all summer, which may have contributed to the elevated levels." Then the committee was waiting for the vote at town meeting for the funding of the water treatment design and has been in discussions with the DEP to avoid any penalties for failure to address the issue. If the article passes, a RFP will be written. And then something about the
I want to get RFP.
Police building, yeah. All right, so there's that one. So I don't, I mean, how do we even vote on this? Because it's just me. You guys both have, really can't
Well, we'll vote you in. I mean
It's kind of awkward.
Yeah, but
I wasn't even a selectman then.
No, you weren't a selectman then. John was missing from the meeting.
I don't know why you and I still got voted, though.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we accept it as amended.
As amended? Okay. All right, all second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so then, so that's the eighth. Then we have 5:22, which Bree got to us today. I thought those looked good, and I thought it was a nice tribute that you still had Colleen on there as seconding.
Did I know?
She voted to adjourn.
Missed that.
Motion by Colleen Thompson.
Do you have those? I never saw those.
I missed that.
She sent them to us today.
Oh, okay, I guess I, oh, I didn't check my mail before.
Okay. So that was the only thing I saw.
Wasn't she there on 5:22?
I was fine with.
No, 5:22 was after the election. That was the first meeting with Mark.
Oh, there was the reorganization?
Yeah, we reorganized.
You didn't see her here, are you sure?
Yeah. No, no, she was not here. She said she was thinking about coming, but she didn't.
She was here in spirit.
She was here in spirit. She's always here in spirit.
She just.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from 5:22 as amended?
Yes.
Aye.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye. All right. Then we had Dale's, no, John's, 5:23 executive session minutes. I didn't have any changes on those. Did you have anything on those, Mark?
I'm okay with them as written.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that we accept the executive session minutes from May 23rd as written. Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, and then we have open session minutes from Dale, which he got to us. And I didn't have anything on those. Did you guys have anything on those?
The only thing I had there was a zero in front of my name, which I presume was a typo and not a comment.
Not a commentary? All right, did you have anything, John?
No, I didn't see anything.
Okay, all right. All right, so a motion to accept the minutes from 5:30 as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so dates to remember, we're meeting next week, the 12th. We have got the consultants coming to meet with us at 6 o'clock to talk about the town administrator.
Yes.
Position and, and what they have to offer. The chief wanted to meet with us that day. Do you want to put him on, what, like 7? Would that give us enough time, an hour, you think, with?
I would think so.
This group? Okay.
For the chief?
Yeah, why don't we put the chief on at 7?
And what was the chief about that?
He wants to talk to us about the possibility of, I think, transferring a surplus police car to fire.
To fire, yes, he wants the SUV.
Oh, we have an SUV? We have a surplus SUV?
The old SUV, isn't that the chief's? One or the other? I'm not sure what's back there for surplus vehicles.
You know what? Why don't, why don't we wait? Can we put this off one more week? Because Chief Dillon isn't available, unless you want to talk to him this week and find out.
Sure.
Yeah, let's put it off for two weeks.
Do you want to put it off till the 19th?
Yeah.
All right, let's put him off to the 19th, just in case we go late. And plus, we may have John coming in to talk to us about the water, anyway. Okay, so we'll do the chief. So he can come in anytime on the 19th, and he'll be the only thing we've got on the agenda so far. Okay, so we're meeting on the 12th, 19th.
But do you want to know what vehicle is ahead of time?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. And we'll, we'll need to talk to the chief about it.
Right.
Too.
Please chief.
Yes, please chief.
Is it 116, vehicle 116? Does that make sense?
We have to, I know this, you know, supposedly there's an inventory of all vehicles in town that the finance committee gets, but I would like to see it, and that's something we've got to follow up on.
Sure.
It's not today or next week, but in the next month.
Yeah, and what the plan is, because you certainly don't want to have all these vehicles on the insurance.
And I'm speaking to Chief Dillon before that also. Do you want him part of this meeting? Did you want, or just want?
Why don't we set up the Chief Bursari for the 19th? And then, John, do you want to reach out to, to Pat? Or you, or Bree, you can reach out to Pat this week?
He stops in them every day, so.
Okay. Want to talk to Pat?
Makes his rounds.
All right, talk to Pat, and just make sure, see if he's got any concerns about transferring this. Okay, then we go 6:26. We won't have a meeting on the 4th of July that week. We're planning on being off. Then we go, start the 10th, 17th, 24th, and 31st, and the townhouse will start their summer hours on 7/10. So everyone else will have summer hours that start that week.
Well, we actually made it effective 7/3, then off.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so everybody will be back on the 10th, and then they'll be off on the 17th. Gotcha.
There is a memo that's been sent out.
Okay.
And I have no contacts, so I wrote the memo, sent it to Tara, Sarah did, Tara did the distribution list, and then the town website has been updated.
Perfect. Awesome. Okay, and then other meetings that we've got pending on the 14th at 11:00 a.m., John, Mark, and Dale, our meeting to discuss the town coordinator, coordinator, town administrator transition. And then, we are tentative, we're planning on meeting with the bylaw review committee on 6:22 at 7:00 p.m. to discuss a plan for review of the town bylaws.
We also have on 7/10, the Montello Street issue.
Right. Thank you for reminding me. 7/10, we've got Jim Mulcahy coming in.
Yeah.
And I don't think we have a time yet. Do you want to try to firm him up with the time?
Is this 6:30?
Want to do 6:30?
Or do you want to do?
He'd probably like sooner than later.
Want to do 6?
Yeah.
All right, we'll start with Jim at 6:00 on the 10th to talk about paving Montello. Okay. All right, so now we're on to rants and raves. Do you want to start?
Sure. So I have a rave. This is for the First Saturday Library Event. I've spoken highly in the past of the library, the events that go on. We have a great library. But every Saturday, the First Saturday of every month, they have what they call First Saturday Event. Starts at 10:30, there's always coffee. Volunteers make muffins and things. And they do, oftentimes we have a presentation. I think the last one was on tick season, and it was given by the Board of Health, Kathy Dryna.